Hello, can everyone hear me? My name is Amy Abley. I am a member of the BRF Elementary PTO. We wanted to welcome you tonight and thank you for coming. We have three school board candidates that we're going to learn about. This is a very informational meeting. We just want to find out their histories, why they're interested in the school board. We have Amy Huffman, Dave Mack, and Tina Boyson. We also have Todd Stidler, who is unable to be here tonight. His son is receiving a big award of some sort, Athlete of the Year, I'm not sure. So, I have a statement that I'm going to read that he gave us after these three are finished with their introductions. We have note cards on the tables. So, we're going to give you an opportunity to either write down a question and put it in the red cup at the end of the table, and we will ask those questions for you, or if you're feeling brave enough to raise your hand and just ask a question, you can do that too. And if you have a specific question for Amy, or Dave, or Tina, you can say that on your card or when you ask. Okay. Oh, we wanted to also remind you, before I move on, that next Monday, from 5:30 to 7:00, is the Meet the Superintendent Finalist Forum. We have three finalists, Tom Chambers, John Guyer, and Shelley Saberson. And the community will be meeting at the High School LMC, so we hope that we see you there too. Very important. Okay. Mr. Mack's going to go first, he said.
I'm outnumbered. I'm Dave Mack. I was a former teacher in the Black River Falls School District. I taught math in 8th or 9th grade for 37 years. I retired about six years ago now, and I have been the last five years with Western Technical College, working in instructional support services there, mainly working with GED and HSED students. And I do other things there as well, with some tutoring and some other classwork. But I guess my main thing I'd like to say is that I don't have a personal agenda because I was a teacher. I feel I know a lot of the things that are happening in the district. I'm pretty familiar with the district through my years of service here. I also think that by having worked for the technical college now, I've seen kind of both sides of the picture. I'm working now with students that I had in school a number of years ago, who are now in their 30s, maybe I won't go too much higher, but 30s and up, that aren't successful in school, and not just in our district, but other districts as well, and are now back in the technical college trying to earn a GED or HSED. And so, I've seen students that have been successful and not successful, and I'm sure learning a lot more from the ones now about why they weren't successful and some of the reasons that they did not finish school. And one thing that I maybe just point out, the one big thing that I realized in a hurry was the fact that they left school usually had zero to do with intelligence. There's some very, very great people coming back earning GEDs and HSEDs that dropped out of school for other reasons. And so, I think I have a little bit of an insight on kind of both sides of the picture.
Hi, I'm Amy Huffman. I grew up here in Black River, and now I currently have two boys who are school age. My oldest is 13, and I homeschool him for his core curriculum, and he goes to the middle school, 7th grade, and attends a couple of classes there. And I also have a nine-year-old who is in the 3rd grade, and he's full-time at school. I really think that my experience with this and our reasons for homeschooling have kind of given me a real incentive to look into the reasons why so many people leave our district and go elsewhere, or maybe simply choose to homeschool instead of send their kids to our own district. And I'd really like to try and solve that as much as is possible, and bring our kids back, and really promote our school as a great place to be, as a first choice, instead of not a first choice for some people. So, that's really my big reason why I wanted to run for school board, and to add that kind of a perspective and voice to the board.
Thank you. My name is Tina Boyson. I am currently a school board member appointed, and I am running for this election in the spring because my experiences thus far have been great. I'm a former employee of the school district, worked through Title VII, federal grant funding for my job at the time. Some of the things that I did were writing the grant, working with native students, professional development with teachers, liaison to the community, coaching high school basketball, coaching girls softball, volunteering with at-risk student groups in the middle school, which I continued even after my employment because I love working with the kids. I also taught, if you want to call it, Bojangles Culture and History, because there was nobody within the district to be able to do that. I do not hold a teacher certification license, so I am not a teacher. First and foremost, I am a parent. I have kids in the district. I support all kids in the district and families that are trying to help their kids succeed, whether it's in the classroom, out of the playground, or in sports, in clubs, in groups. I'd like to see these kids succeed, and I'd like to see the parents be involved with the children's success. That is my primary goal as a school board member. I also know that there are a lot of other responsibilities as a board member, based on my experience, which is looking at the policies, which is the primary role of the board, a very in-depth, complicated process, but a very much needed one. Looking at the finances, looking at ways for the district to grow, given the limited amount of funds that we have in public school systems. Listening to what everyone has to say, I think, is a key part of my role as a board member, whether it's students, staff, teachers, custodians, secretaries. I have established relationships with everybody, and I don't want to say from the top to the bottom. I'll say everybody, because everybody's role is equal within the district. It doesn't matter who you are. And I pride myself on that. So, I am here to do the best I can for the students, for staff, and for everyone else, and that's why I am running for this candidacy again in the spring.
All right, I'll briefly read this statement from Todd Stidler. "I apologize that I will not be able to attend tonight's forum. My son Grant was chosen as the Male Scholar Athlete of the Year for the Black River Falls High School. Each school in the Cooley Conference chooses one male scholar athlete and one female scholar athlete. In turn, the Cooley Conference recognizes these scholar athletes at a banquet, and that banquet is this evening. My wife Kathy, Grant's twin brother Remington, and I will be with Grant attending the banquet. I have lived in the Black River Falls School District for 25 years. My wife Kathy and I have been married for 26 years. In the spring, we will have four children go through the BRF School District. Our oldest daughter Brooke is in grad school at Mayo Clinic College of Medicine, Rochester, Minnesota. Morgan is a junior at August Dana College in Rock Island, Illinois, and will be applying for grad school as she intends to be a physical therapist. And Grant and Remington will be graduating from high school this spring and attending college this fall. I've had the opportunity to be a member of a number of boards over the years we have lived in Black River Falls. I also have an extensive business background, having started my own company 25 years ago, and grown it into a well-respected, nationally-known company in the hunting industry. During this time, I have negotiated manufacturing and vendor agreements with many Fortune 100 companies, been involved in large-scale building projects, and responsible for setting budgets and adhering to those budgets. I believe my business experience would be a great asset as a member of the Black River Falls School Board. In closing, I want every student that goes through the Black River Falls School District to have positive experience and graduate with an education that prepares them for the workforce or college while being financially responsible with hard-earned taxpayers' money. Sincerely, Todd Stidler." I'll start with a question. Okay. The question was, "Your name is mentioned as a former teacher in ads in the paper." This is for Tina, and it says, "Are you a licensed teacher?" You already answered that. No.
Yeah, there seems to be a question of whether or not I am. I did teach Bojangles Culture and History. The only way I was able to do that was to go to our traditional courts through our Bojangles Nation and get certified to be able to do that on behalf of our elders. They allowed me to do that. I am not a DPI-certified teacher. I don't have those exquisite skills that those teachers have. I did apply for a, I think it was a two- or a three-year substitute teaching license, right after the Title VII grant changed focus, so I got a substitute license teaching. So, I came in and helped as a substitute teacher in all grades K through 12, and that's kept me connected with the district and the students in many ways, and I was able to also keep coaching at that time as well, voluntarily, softball at the time. So, thank you.
All right, this is going to be for everyone. "Have you been to any school board meetings in the past year? Why or why not?"
No, I haven't. I have been reading the minutes on the school board website, and so I've tried to kind of keep abreast of things a little bit that way. So, I guess, you know, up until the end of this, well, this fall, that's when I really started just kind of wondering what's going on, why is there so much commotion in our school? You know, I thought that things had been going very smoothly up until that point, and then just became very concerned, and that's when I really kind of felt like maybe I should get more involved.
Yes, I've been to several board meetings in the past year, notably last fall, when I was trying to apply for the appointment on the seat on the board and answer the number of questions at that time. I was also at the meeting, in fact, I was at the meeting last night, where they discussed possible budget issues and upcoming in the spring here now.
Well, yeah, I've been to a few. And, I don't know, what else I can say?
This is another one for all three. "What are ways you propose to make financial ends meet without raising taxes?"
Well, I don't think any, that's not an individual decision, or any of the board decisions. That's a cooperative effort by the board to set, in fact, that's what they talked about in the meeting last night, about priorities, setting their priorities on what they can do to keep budgets as is without, and still be able to enable programs and situations come up where the budget needs to be approved for those items. Like I said, it's not a one-person show to be able to do that. I pay taxes like everybody else in the district, and I'm not any happier to see my taxes go up than anybody else. So, I think I'm pretty fiscally responsible, but it's something that needs to be done cooperatively through the board, I think.
Thank you, Dave. I have to agree with Dave in the fact that it is a board decision. It's not something individually that I can answer, and if there's one thing that I've learned from the board is that it's a, we are a "we." It's not an "I" thing. You can't have a personal agenda, because the group that's there is too much of a "we." With getting back to the question about finances, if elected, one of the things that I would hope to promote is that we establish an advisory, budget advisory committee, that would include several people from the community, from the staff, to look at and keep an eye, because we have curriculum, we have policy. I think that would be a real beneficial committee for us to have in the upcoming years, so we can become transparent, I guess is the buzzword these days.
Well, I think we all would want to do our best to make the best use of the budget that's available without raising taxes. I, you know, a lot of people in this community are struggling, and so we don't want to see that happen. I think, just like with any business, you have to look at how your money is being spent and see what is the best and most effective, and if you, in that oversight, find ways to trim things, then you need to do that. Sometimes you find things that are wasteful. You do it in your own home, when you bring homeless money, for whatever reason, and you find things that you really like, you really don't want to get rid of, but you know you don't really have to have either. So, you know, sometimes you have to look at those things and see what might be unnecessary.
Anyone like to ask a question out loud? Yeah, we just, just in case. Okay. All right, this is for all three. Oh, sorry.
I have a question for Amy. Why do you homeschool?
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I will say that homeschooling is something that I've always respected. My mom homeschooled my youngest brother. It's not something I would have enjoyed, and really, it's not something I was seeking to do for my kids either. However, my oldest son came to me during his 5th grade and pretty much begged me to homeschool him. And I had been watching him over the last year, in half of, you know, 4th grade, 5th grade, coming home each day, more and more frustrated, angry, and stressed out. And knowing all of that and his personality, I really felt that I needed to do that for him. And it's made a big difference. He's a lot happier, and life is just a lot better for him right now. You know, I think, not that I want to think that something terrible would have happened with my child, but he was experiencing some bullying at school, and it was a daily occurrence. And I just didn't want to see him shut down and, you know, struggle even more than he already was. I felt like I really had to address it, and I couldn't ignore it.
Anyone else? Okay, all three of you. "Currently, there is an emphasis on job creation, and also the fact that many jobs are going unfilled in the manufacturing and technical sector because of the unavailability of qualified applicants. Do you feel there is a need for the Black River Falls School District to expand elective course offerings in the vocational, technical areas of our school district to give more students a greater opportunity for exploration and exposure to potential careers and employment?"
Well, I have a kind of a firsthand knowledge of this because I worked through the technical colleges the past year, or two of the sessions, you may have seen in the paper, went through the Department of Corrections, and Technical College, and Black River Falls School District, and a number of businesses in town. And it was a welding seminar. I taught industrial math for that program, and there was so much interest in that, not just among our own students in the Black River Falls School District. The first one was mainly for the Department of Corrections, and Black River School District also placed one student in there. And I was in the school three times a week for a total of about 24 weeks, and I talked to lots of students while I was in the school, and there seems to be a great deal of interest in the technical trades. There's certainly, I know in welding right now, there's certainly a job, there's a lot of job openings in the welding industry that are going unfilled. So, my personal opinion is we should be taking a serious look at technical education in our school, and if possible, do some expansion in that area, because I think there's a real need for it right now.
I am an advocate of technical trades as well. Couple months back, we visited WWTC, and the president, Lee Roche, spoke, and he did a lot of talking on technical trades and the need. And I would like to continue that collaboration, collaborative effort with the technical schools. Also, I think there are a lot of other businesses in this town that would be more than happy to work together with us to develop that workforce. I do know the Bojangles Nation also has a dental facility that they're building out on 54. That's got potentials there as well. There's a lot of opportunity in this town for the technical trades, and there's a huge need, so I'm a big advocate. I'm excited about the welding program that we have. I'm also a very big advocate of technology, and I think we need to really do some serious focus on that aspect of our curriculum as well.
I have to agree with both of them on this issue. University is not for everybody. Not everybody is interested or is able to be successful in that. And the technical trades offer a really, really good chance of great jobs for a lot of people, and I don't think we can ignore that. There's a real need in our community to help more kids get through our school, and I think this is a great way for a lot of people to have wonderful jobs.
What issue do you feel deserves top priority of the school board in the next year?
Well, I don't know that necessarily my idea is truly the most important, but I really, seriously think we need to investigate why we see such a lot of parents decide to take their kids to other districts. There's got to be reasons, I'm sure there's more than one, but, you know, if we really find out what they are, maybe we can take some real steps to change that. Because I think it maybe says something about our school that they're leaving, and that's a lot of money leaving the district also from our budgets. You know, I don't know exactly how much money we get per student, but, you know, we're probably looking at over half a million dollars out of the budget every year with those students who have left.
Well, I should have gone first, I can see. I tend to share the same issue as she does. I think that's certainly not the only issue that I'm interested in, but I would definitely be interested in knowing why a lot of our students are going, likely to opt out of our district on open enrollment. And as you said, I think it is in the half-million-dollar range on the amount of money that leaves our district with those students, so that would definitely be a top priority of mine as well.
There's several, but I think I'll stick with this same topic of losing students to other districts. And there actually has been some work done on why that is. We have some information, you know, anywhere from virtual school to parents working outside a district and wanting their kids to go to school in the same place they work, to extracurriculars, to, there's a lot of different reasons. Some people, it's bullying; some people say it's racism. There are several things out there that lead a parent to decide to take their kid out. That all being said, I think the district is doing a lot to address many of those. We have, the BBIS is coming up, that's going to address some of the behavioral needs, it's going K-12. As far as the options for virtual schools, that was high on the list of priorities for something that we need to look at and make sure that we're providing quality virtual schools, because that is a way that people are going as far as education as an option. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons, and I think that's a very important issue, Amy. I have to agree with you and Dave, and there are several other key issues, but for now, I'll stick with them.
All three of you, what is your opinion of using public school funds to provide vouchers for students to attend non-regulated private schools?
I'm opposed to offering vouchers for students to attend private schools. I don't believe in government funding private industry in that fashion, which is, private school really is. I'm also, the fact right now, as it stands right now, they don't have to meet the same standards, don't have to accept all students, don't have to take the same testing as public schools do. So, for me, I'm opposed to voucher system.
I would agree with everything that Dave has said, and the biggest part of the voucher and kids going to those schools is the accountability that those schools are held to. I think that's the biggest thing. The other thing is, is that if a student goes to a private school, and that funding goes to that school, if that child doesn't meet the requirements of that school, they can send them back to the public school and keep the money. So, that's my two cents on that.
Well, I'm going to actually disagree on this one. I think it's a good idea. It's not obviously an issue that we have right here in Black River, but if parents don't feel that the school their child is going to is meeting their needs, and they feel that a private school does meet those needs, then I feel that they should have the ability to go where they're going to be best served. If they're paying taxes, then why shouldn't that tax money go with them? Their child's getting an education, and so I feel that hopefully, such a system would at the very least help those other schools that are, that they're leaving to work harder to be better, and to draw those students back. But I know that if my child were in a failing school system and a dangerous school system, I would certainly want to be able to put them somewhere else.
"When teachers are often preparing students for state and federal testing, how important is it for teachers to teach subjects other than to pass these tests?"
Could you repeat the question? Just kidding. Well, that's kind of a, I don't believe in teaching to the test. I also think that, based on my children's, I have one student that graduated already, a high schooler and a middle schooler. They're not real fond of the testing, and I guess I'm not real fond of it either. But that being said, a big part of the decisions that have to be made are based on the data that's taken from that, and that's a reality. It's all about funding and data. As far as what the teachers are doing, I think it's very important that they stick to what's important. I don't believe in teaching to the test, and if it were my child, I guess I wouldn't support that concept. If they're doing what they're supposed to do, and how they're supposed to do it, the child should be fine.
I tend to agree on this one. I have never been a big fan of teaching to the test. I think if your curriculum is set to cover the core standards, I think you should be correspondingly fine for the testing program. That being said, I also think that there's a, I think teachers are kind of forced into that when it gets to be around test time, but maybe we need to review a few things. It comes up kind of fast in the fall of the year, at least when, without a lot of time, when kids get back from the summer vacation and so on. So, I don't think there's anything wrong with doing some reviewing for the testing. But as for teaching for the test, I think that's something teachers do every day. They're not really teaching for a test, they're teaching the curriculum that's important.
I agree on this also. I think if a teacher is teaching what needs to be taught for that particular grade level and... and meeting the core curriculum needs, that they're going to probably be fine on the test. And sometimes teaching other material makes it all that much more interesting and can actually make learning much more exciting for kids. So I think a little variety and going off the beaten path can, can be a real advantage.
Anyone from the crowd feeling brave? No? Okay. This is a facilities question. What ideas do you have to get a facilities referendum passed? And there's another one, I'm just gonna read right along with it. Onalaska's considering building a new elementary to replace a building that is considered outdated. It was built in the seventies. What would be your position on upgrading replacement to our buildings?
Well, I think we do need to have something. I, I don't think it's necessarily a great thing that our elementary schools are in three different locations and certainly Third Street is pretty old and I think a little difficult for any disabled students to get around in. I think as a board, we need to show that we are being fiscally responsible and that we're trying to meet the requirements that are necessary without going overboard. I think unfortunately in the past, things have happened that maybe leave a sour taste in the models of voters and they have been very negative about passing a referendum for a new school and somehow we need to change that so that we can provide the facilities that the kids need.
And, excuse me, and the way things are at the present with budget issues in all the school districts, I realize this is a pretty tough issue in terms of finding funds for and passing referendums for new school buildings. But on the other hand, if we look at the situation with our elementary buildings in this district, I think just as any homeowner or business, where there becomes a time when it's hard to put money into keeping older facilities operational with the cost of running them, the cost of utilities, the cost of maintenance, the cost of just daily upkeep on those buildings. So I think that in order to pass a referendum to build a new facility, it involves a whole process involving community members and business members and, and school administration and school teachers and it, it takes a whole community to build a school. It's not just the board deciding that we need a new building, we're gonna send this referendum on and pass it. It has to be something this town is behind as well.
I agree with, with both. And during our interview processes thus far for the superintendent, that's one of the qualities I'm looking at in that person is are they a people person? Are they a good communicator? Can they express truly the needs of the district? Not only academically, fiscally, but facilities wise, because we are in dire need, in my belief, of some upgrades. I like the idea that Amy's talking about with elementary's being together. You have realistic and you have dream. And that was one of the first questions that I had, I think, when I was appointed or maybe then was, what, what would I like? And as a dream, I'd like to see that our schools are all together, you know, whether or not that's realistic, you know, that's, it seems more like a dream, but I think and I believe that we need quality facilities for a lot of reasons. I think sustainability is a huge issue. Energy, looking at facilities that are green. I mean, we look at the ones we got now and we do our best to make them efficient, but there's only so much you can do with the, however old Third Street School is, you know. So we need to look at that avenue and, and look down the road at the savings rather than the cost right up front. And I guess lastly, I, I'm really gonna agree with Dave, that it's gonna take everyone, it's gonna take everyone to understand if we were to do that, the importance of it, the pride it would create. I, I just, I think there's a need.
This one is for Dave Mack. Did you serve on the teachers' union bargaining committee or any other union positions? Is the school board being taken over by teacher union activists?
I was active in our union when I was a teacher. I did serve on the bargaining committee for quite a few years. I served on their insurance committee for a good number of years as well and I was active in the union at that time. I don't think this precludes me though from being impartial, I'm looking for the correct word here, in dealing with both school board issues and teacher issues. I was, I'm not, I guess I've never hidden the fact that I was active in our union and active in, as a teacher and active in my teaching experience. I've never hidden the fact that, I mean, everybody in town knows me just about if I've been in school in the last, I don't know how many years. And you know, I, I'm not ashamed of that fact and I also think that that also gives me some advantages now because the fact that I, I worked with insurance for, I don't even know, thirty, thirty-five years probably, I'm pretty familiar with the insurance programs, which I think is important, the district deals with that on a regular basis and affects not just the teachers in the district, it affects all the district employees. The fact that I was negotiating for the teachers' union, there's not a lot of that happening anymore, but it certainly gives me insight into both sides of the process. I don't think that that's a conflict adverse on my part. And as to being, teachers trying to take over the board, I, I was a parent also in this district, I had two daughters that went through this district. They are not in the district anymore. If I looked at a reason why I would be coming back trying to find a seat on the school board, my only personal interest is to make this the best district and convene and provide education for our district. The fact that I taught here all these years and am still teaching should say something about the fact that I think that education is important and my commitment to education and I'm not just another teacher trying to take over the school board, I'm a parent and I'm a community member and I'm a taxpayer as well, trying to make this the best school district there can be.
Do you feel that the school, Black River Falls School District should embrace Act Ten and try to find savings for the taxpayers using the tools available in Act Ten?
I don't know if we really have a choice to embrace it. It's something that's, that is, it is, it is what it is. The goal is to make it work for us as a team and we do. We work with the teachers. The teachers help create the handbook with us for the changes that take place. So as far as embracing it, I don't know, I don't know if I'd use that word, but it is what it is.
Can you define what that is for us?
What?
Act Ten?
Act Ten? Act Ten is something that Governor Walker has brought about where the negotiating, pretty much taken away the negotiating of the unions. So we, matter of fact, we just last night went through all the policies that our policy committee looked at to make all those changes to the employees' handbooks and took out all the, that language for the collective bargaining and replaced it with other quality language. Is that good?
I kinda agree with Tina on the fact that I don't know if embrace is a word I would use, but I also say it is what it is. That being said, I guess my comment on it would be is the fact that the teachers, I'm trying to think of the right words to say. I'm not looking at this being a, it should not be a us against them kind of adversarial position between the school board and the teachers. This is no different than, I mean, a school district is a large business in this community, in any community. And the fact that any business, if you want your employees to do the, provide the best production or be the best with your customers in case of a retail establishment, you want your employees to be happy at their jobs. You want them to feel fulfilled at their jobs. This doesn't necessarily mean just being paid more, which there's certain restrictions on that. It means making them feel like they have a say in what's happening in their jobs. So I think there, there's a real, it's real important and like I said, I don't know if I'd use the word embrace, but the school board and the teachers should be working together towards the same end, educating our students to the best we can. And the teachers are the number one, if you look at all the research, the number one factor in, in an education program, regardless of the curriculum being used, is always the teacher. So I can't say, think of any reason why you would not want that teacher to feel fulfilled and happy at their job. They're, they're the number one contact with all their students in the district.
I think Act Ten has made it possible for school boards to act with their budget. Unfortunately, the way collective bargaining worked, it took out any, any room to maneuver for school boards and I think there's examples even in Wisconsin of, of the teachers within a district being willing to, to compromise on things and then being told by their union that that's not acceptable. And it, it should be something that is decided between the school board and the teachers in that district and not some entity who, who doesn't have to worry about the issues involved with, with meeting their budget. The union really, I think, had a stranglehold, the, the collective bargaining really had a stranglehold on, on the school boards and their ability to, to meet their budget. What are you supposed to do when, when you have shortfalls and no way to, to meet that and still have to make sure to be able to pay the teachers based on, on what the, the union was telling them, whether it was what the teachers were willing to agree to or not? So I think it gives flexibility and, and that's necessary and I think it can save some money just by being able to find different insurance, for example. That wasn't even a possibility before.
Talk about your position on the public concern or support on arming teachers or schools with guns.
Well, excuse me, I am absolutely opposed to arming teachers with guns in the district. And I am a, I'm a life member of the NRA. I've been a hunter, in fact, hunter education tonight, that's where I would be if I was not here tonight. I've been a hunter education teacher in Black River Falls District here for forty years this year. So I am not anti-gun, I am not anti-hunting, I shoot a lot myself, I hunt myself, but I do not feel that guns have a place in, in the teachers and, or any members unless it was a liaison officer in the district.
I'm not for guns in school either. That being said, I am for proactively looking at ways to make schools safer other than guns in school. And one of those ideas is that we do have a few staff in the district that are weekend warriors and I don't know if that's even politically correct, but we do have people with military experience and I think they have knowledge. And I'm not saying give them a gun, but I'm saying utilize their skills. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, so.
I think this question probably arises out of the, the school shooting that took place in November and brings up a lot of safety concerns that parents have. I think a lot of people would feel very uncomfortable with teachers being armed at school and I think it would probably just create a battle that's not really necessary. I think a very simple solution would simply, pepper spray, that works and nobody has to worry about killing anybody or, you know, it, it disables a person's ability to, to continue to shoot a weapon or, you know, there's even fighting that takes place at school and especially at the high school level, if something like that happens, it becomes a physical danger to the teachers as well and I don't really think it's fair to expect them to try and break up a fight and risk their own safety in the process. So I think there's probably other ways that we can try and make our schools safer, safer without asking teachers to carry weapons.
All right, all three of you, what do you feel is the board's purpose to make our district more attractive for students who want, to want to come here? Did you understand that?
Sure.
What do you feel is the board's purpose to make our district more attractive for students to want to come here?
I don't know if the board can by itself do things to make our school more attractive and try to draw students to the school district. However, we can certainly work with our principals and the teachers to, to make our school a place that, that people are proud of and wanna come to and it has to be a collaborative effort. That's not something that can be, I think mandated, if you will, by a few people on a board. It has to be something that everybody works together on. It's a community and that it has to be done as a community.
I tend to agree with us that schools need to have a certain pride in their schools and teachers, pride in programs. I think programs bring students into schools a lot. Quality programs, quality teachers, quality staff members, just kind of having a positive effect on promoting the schools in general and, I guess that's it.
I agree with Amy. I don't think that as a board, that's something that we specifically can do ourselves. I do believe, based on last night's board meeting, which was very informational and really gave me an idea of what it is a board needs to do from a fiscal standpoint and there's not a lot of money there. Not money in the, in the budget. It's, it's just a matter of where are the priorities? And as far as from a board standpoint on what we can do, we really seriously have to look at what we do have and really make the best decision about the programs, like Dave said, that are going to bring those students in based on what limited funds we do have. And that's...
Okay, we have two questions here that I think are, kind of go together. If elected, would you make a point of visiting with the various staff, teachers, aides, custodians? If so, how often? And another staff question, do you support teacher evaluations and would you act to get rid of a chronically terrible teacher?
Well, I guess first of all, I would have, I would have trust in the administration of that building to take care of that teacher. As a, as a board member, that's not my responsibility. If my child was in a class and I was a parent, I would definitely go to the teacher first and ask what's going on. If I wasn't happy with that, I'd go to the administrator. And if I wasn't happy with that, I'd go to the superintendent. And if I wasn't happy with that, then I'd go to the board. And from there, the process would take place, but as a board member myself, that's not part of my job duty. But as a board member myself, that's not part of my job duty. I had another thought, but I lost it.
You touched on if you would visit with various staff.
Oh yeah, that was the other part. I guess I would continue, because I already do that. I don't make it in there enough. I feel, I always felt like I, is, like, if you like I neglect Fourth Street. But I try to get in all the schools as much as I can. I found that it's not as easy as I thought it might be. But I try to get in there and visit the staff. I try to go to events and volunteer and sporting events. So yeah, I would continue that and I love it and I wouldn't stop it whether I was on the board or not, so.
Trying to remember the first part of the question. In terms of chronically poor teacher, I agree with Tina on this one. I don't think it's the board's job to micromanage a school. I think it's administrator's job to deal with that. If it comes to the board eventually, that's a different matter. But I don't think that's the board's decision initially. In terms of being in the schools, I would be in the schools as much as possible. I have not been in all the buildings now, I have to confess, because I don't have a real purpose there as I'm not on the board at this time. I am in the middle school fairly frequently now because I'm still tutoring part-time there with a student. I still work football games, cross country meets, track meets, have years of teaching, still do. I think it's important for board members to be in contact with the school employees, administrators, teachers, janitors, all that, custodial staff and so on. I think it's good for board members to be seen in the buildings.
I think that teacher evaluations are a good thing, but I think they need to be done by the principal of the school, because that's who works with them on a daily basis. They know the strengths and weaknesses of every classroom and that's how they can help a teacher or how that teacher can share their knowledge with other teachers in the building and help and work together to make everything better. If you have a chronically bad teacher, I think we can all probably say we've had a couple of those in our experience. Unfortunately, I think if a principal knows that, they should be able to remove them and replace them with a better person. I think in the past, we've had, you know, the seniority kept teachers in place whether they were good at their job or not. And that's unfair to the students. And we need, I think that, you know, that needs to be handled as appropriate. But I think that evaluations of teachers need to happen by the principal, because they're the ones who work with them and know what's happening in their building. And as far as meeting teachers and staff, and I think it's important to get to know them. If you're on a school board, you have to know how they feel about how things are going on and you'll be able to work together. And you do that by getting to know each other and feeling free to talk to each other and communicate.
Another staff question, with the amount of staff turnover, Biera has been experiencing, what can the board's role be in enticing and maintaining high-quality effective teachers to these positions?
I think simply by being supportive of the superintendent and the principals in making the work environment a positive one and, you know, making sure that teachers have the freedom to do the best jobs that they possibly can. I don't know the specific reasons why teachers have chosen to leave, if that's, it was because of choice or simply because we've had to cut down on staffing. But we want to draw positive and great teachers to our area. And I think whatever the school board can do to encourage that really should happen.
I think that, I have seen this from the other side of the fence, so to speak, as well as a former teacher. And I know for teachers, need to feel fulfilled in their jobs and feel needed in their jobs. If they don't feel that, no different than anyone working for anybody else. If you're not feeling that or don't feel like you have the support and so on that you need in your teaching position, then you're probably going to look elsewhere for benefit for that person. So, I think we need to make sure that our staff feels important and feel necessary and feel a vital part of the district. And that the administration and school board supports their programs in any way they can. Granted, I know we have some fiscal constraints that we have to look at as well on that, but it doesn't have to be just financially supporting. I'm talking about supporting them through trying to make them feel like they're an important part of our district, I guess.
I think we're bound by fiscal constraints quite a bit. But I do, I would like to think that those exceptional teachers that go above and beyond are somehow recognized, because if they don't, they'll leave. Unfortunately, we've had some really, really good teachers in this district leave in the last couple of years. And it's sad and it's frustrating as well, because I have kids that are coming up that I was so looking forward to the opportunity for them to be a part of some of those classes. And they're gone. Those that are here, we still have some fantastic teachers, you know, for the most part, all of them. I think in order for teachers to want to come in, or in order for teachers to stay, there needs to be a sense of ownership. There needs to be a sense of empowerment. You need to realize that their ideas and their work is not going unnoticed. So much time is put in that doesn't really get paid for. And that's, you know, I've heard many times teachers say, "I'm not in this for the money." And I truly, truly believe that. They're there because they love kids and they like what they're doing and they think that education is important. So, I think empowerment, a sense of ownership and a voice, and letting teachers, you know, come up with these ideas and programs and let them be a part of the decision-making.
Before I read the next question, I'm going to give you an opportunity from the crowd.
Hello, everybody. My name's Erwin McGay. I'm from the Navajo Nation. I married a Ho-Chang woman in ninety-three and that's why I live up here. That's our way of living where your spouse lives, so. Anyway, it's a pretty interesting meeting. A lot of things are being said and all that. And I was thinking about when I was in a boarding school, they didn't empower us. They blow the whistle, you listen, do a right face, go play. They blow the whistle, then you go do what you're told. It was a sequenced situation. And we learned that, and once they took it away, we couldn't go to college, because the department wasn't there. And it wasn't we, like Tina was saying. And I was just wondering if these kids that had problems in school, is there a suggestion box to get some input from them? Because as adults, we think we know more than the kids do. And I'm thinking maybe we should put a suggestion box so you guys can relate to what they're looking for. Maybe want to add more color to their life, you know? Going to school, just can't wait to get on that bus. Because I think, you know, some kids, they go there and they think they're just being babysitted, that's it, you know? They say, "Ah gee, I hate to go to this class right now," you know? So, I've been there. So, what I'm saying is, if we get some input from them, maybe it might change just much, just a little bit, you know? So, you know, we're doing what we can, but we need to get input from them. That's all I got.
I would just say that anything that we can do to increase the number of our kids to graduate and maybe even make the decision to go on to tech school or university can only be a positive thing. And I think a lot of kids, as they advance in the middle school and high school, just shut down. They show up and that's the extent of it. And I think we, you know, anything that can improve that and increase those kids this opportunity and chance to be successful in life is something we really, we've got to do, because too many kids are just falling by the wayside and it's not a good thing.
I do think we should value input from students as well as the other members of the community. When you mentioned that sometimes we as adults think we know it all and a lot of times students know more, a lot more about it than we do. I see that daily. I have times students that know a lot more about a lot of things than I do. So, I think they're a valuable resource that we should take advantage of.
Thank you for the information. And it's one of the things that gets you back on track to what we're, why, kind of why we're here. I know as a board member, you always get drilled in your head, policy, policy, policy. But I always come back to the students. And one of my greatest teachers right now is my two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter. I love her to death. I spend as much time with her as I can and she teaches me so much. And I've always said that kids are good medicine and they're full of wisdom. It depends on whether or not you're going to stop and listen to them and watch them. And I've always been that person that would rather hang out with the kids than adults. Sorry, guys, but I'm a kid and I like hanging out with kids. I loved it in coaching, I loved it in the old club. I loved it in the lunchroom. If you see me at sporting events, nine times out of ten, I'm sitting with the kids. I just feel more comfortable there. I don't know. But I think they have a lot of, a lot of good things to say, a lot of knowledge. And it's a very fine point. Thank you.
Anyone else want to add a question? Okay. What does student achievement mean to you? How do you define it and how do you measure it?
This gets back to, the question is, how do I measure it was the question? Or how do...
No, how should it maybe be measured? How should student achievement be measured?
Well, I think to some extent, we have to, we have to test, because that's where the money decisions get made. That's where the program decisions get made on what the needs are. But as far as measuring student success, I would like to see that happen a lot more within the classroom, individually with the teachers themselves. We were just looking at some data in a curriculum instruction meeting today and it was WKCE, map testing, these like three or four different maps or testing. And then they put them all together and decide, okay, how well is my student doing? Sometimes I'd like to say, "I really don't care about that test. I want to know from you. I want to know from the teacher, how is my child doing?" And that's what I trust more than anything, more than any test or anything, is, and that's what I do. I go face-to-face to my teachers and say, "What is my child doing? How are they doing? If they're struggling, why are they struggling?" So, assessment, yes. But my favorite one as a parent is to go right to the source and if there's an issue, resolve it. If there's greatness, celebrate it. And that's kind of what I'm a fan of.
I think the achievement and, you know, what's an achievement for a student? It varies so much from student to student. Maybe an achievement for a student that's been working to, has been unsuccessful and just working to pass a class, maybe that's a big achievement for that student. Maybe achievement for someone else that's been very successful along is a much higher standard. So, I don't think you have, the achievement for different students is not always the same. In terms of how do you measure it? Even when my own daughters were in school here, I personally did not, even though I administered them every year, the WKCE, the test that we gave every year in the fall, I did not take a lot of stock in those myself, just because they're one test on one day or over a couple of days. And no one would like to be measured on that and that's your standard. That says, "This is what you are at this time." Anybody can have, there's all kinds of reasons. People don't test well on certain days or don't test well on that type of a test. So, I think there's so much more that has to go into that in terms of measurement. And I agree with Tina, a great part of that is, you can get the best information on that from a classroom teacher who sees that student every day.
I think achievement does vary from person to person. And so, really, it boils down to helping each student to reach their highest potential, whatever that might be. Some kids never going to amount to much with math, but that doesn't mean that they don't have a great imagination and may, maybe have the ability to write a wonderful story or to be artistic or to have skills in building. So, I think they need to be encouraged to reach their highest potential, to, you need to see what they're interested in and try to engage them by using their likes, their interests in life. And I think you simply measure that by seeing that they're improving and growing and that they're staying engaged. Obviously, testing is necessary for all sorts of reasons. And we want to see that as a whole, that we are always working to do better and that our students are learning. And so, you have to, you have to do that. But whether it's baby steps for somebody who struggles or great leaps forward for somebody who excels, just so that they're always, always improving and reaching for their highest potential.
Okay, Amy, I'm going to start this one with you. There's been a lot of discussion about bullying. Your son has been bullied and Tina mentioned it in the discussion about transfers out of the district. Do you think the district does enough to prevent and stop bullying?
I think dealing with bullying is a really difficult thing. From day one, they get all kinds of anti-bullying stuff thrown at them in school. However, I think when it comes to actually dealing with it, that there's a big problem. I think it's hard to stop it. You can't make a kid stop teasing another kid. It happens when you're not looking. It becomes a case of he said, she said. And so, as hard as you try, I don't think you can completely eradicate it. I feel like sometimes making something really happen at this point in time is hard. I don't think I see it happening. I know when I was going through this with Alex, I always said, you know, try to deal with the student first. If that's not going to work, you need to talk to the teacher or the principal or somebody. But whatever steps were taken, it never entirely solved the problem. And boys don't like to tell, because they know it's just going to cause them more trouble in the long run. Whenever I said, "If you don't let me know, I'll go and talk to the teachers myself," Alex shut right down and that was the end of the discussion and he quit telling me about the problem, because they don't want mom or maybe even dad going into school and talking about it. So, I think it is a really hard, hard thing to deal with and to take away, you know, to get rid of. to get rid of. I don't know. I wish it could change and we could see radical changes. But unfortunately, telling a kid that bullying is wrong doesn't do it. There has to be real proactive steps to make it stop. And I think those proactive steps are what I'm missing.
That's not just an issue in our district. It's an issue in all over the country, the bullying issue. And as a former teacher, I can tell you it's very, very difficult to sometimes even recognize that it's happening. Usually you hear it secondhand. You could have every teacher and every staff member in the building, outside the room every time, anytime they're not teaching, and still never see all of this happening. A lot of times it's very subtle things. You hear it usually indirectly, it's very difficult to see it. And I think bullying, the focus has been on the schools issue in it. But this isn't something that just happens in schools. It happens in workplaces, it happens in the community. It happens electronically now, all over the place. So it's kind of become a school issue, but it's very difficult to schools to deal with. Are we doing enough? How much is enough? That's a real question. But I think it's not just a school issue, it's a community issue and a home issue. The more that parents address this issue at home, the more that supports the, helps support the schools in their effort to try to curtail this. I think that it starts very young. The younger we start with these tactics, I think the better it will be. And is, are we doing enough now? I'm probably doing everything we think we can do now. But I don't think it's going to be, once we've reached this point and we've done everything we can do, I don't think we're ever going to reach that point myself.
I also agree that bullying is a huge problem and it's a national phenomenon. I don't know, I'm not worldly so I can't go that far. I think that it is a community, it is a community concern. I don't think it's something that just a school can address. I think it's a way of life that people choose and it comes from the family. It comes from decisions that are made at home. So it's a monumental task. I do know that the district does a lot for that. I was walking down the hallway here and I see they have little signs up here and there, anti-bullying. So that's a step in the right direction. I know that we have cameras in some of the schools and they've been able to catch, you know, some of these perpetrators of bullying. So we have things in place. We have educational programs in place for bullying. There's always a need for more. And I think it'll probably be a problem that will always exist. But it goes much deeper than something I think the school can solve. We can only battle it and do the best we can. And I think we're doing that and addressing it far more than we ever have. And I think the PBIS Positive Behavioral Intervention. Support? I don't know the full name of it, but I know the program. And I know it's geared at behaviors of the students. It's geared at those times that I think are most likely to have those things happen. And I think that's on school buses, I think that's on playgrounds, I think that's in cafeterias and hallways and passing. And those are the areas that our schools are focusing on to address some of the things. We need more, we need more, we need more, but we are making progress.
We had this question earlier, but it's a little more in detail. "In light of the current budget restraints, how would you increase the vocational presence at the schools?" Kind of talked about that. Would you use WWTC or more budget money to get the vocational training back to where it was?
Well, I know we're at the point in our school budget, especially after being last night's session, that if something's going to be added, something's going to have to go. It's kind of an even trade-off. So do I have an answer as a board candidate on how we would fund this? I do not. To me, it's a board issue to discuss how funding would take place for this. I guess I don't really have an answer how that would happen right now.
I think the word is creativity and thinking outside the box. And then all over, a really used word of collaboration. Somebody gave me a new definition of that. But collaboration with communities, businesses, to see how we can go together. The technical school definitely. And I've kind of thought about the whole grant writer thing, you know? There's got to be grants out there. Seems to be the last thing everybody was, it's got to be grants out there. So, but it's kind of like Dave said. If you're going to bring on something, you're going to have to get rid of something else. And that's the big decision to be made based on input.
I don't think I really have any great, wonderful, bright answers for that one either. I, without knowing what the budget is and where the money goes and how it may or may not be able to be shifted around, I just know that it is important because that's the path that a lot of kids need to be on. So creativity and it is important. And maybe there are ways that kids can get some of this experience and learning through some of our local businesses. I think that's a good idea. It's something Mark and I have kind of just discussed even with Alex, being at home. He's really interested in welding, oddly enough, as we've talked about that so much. And finding ways to get him that experience through Mark's job. So there's got to be other ways we could do something similar with students too. Because there's a lot of jobs for kids who have that kind of background and we need to explore it.
Okay, we have just a few minutes left. So I'm going to give each of you time to do some closing remarks. Anything else that you want to say? Mr. Mack, you can go first.
I guess I don't have a lot to add from what I had previously said. I guess I just, my main focus is I've been interested my whole life in education. In fact, both of my daughters are teachers. Not in this district, but I just think education is kind of the key to everything. I want all our students to be successful. I worked very hard at that when I was teaching in this district. I still am. I have no reason to be on the board except for that reason. And I think I can be an unbiased voice for the board in that respect.
I just would like to close with saying that I care about how our kids are doing at school. I'm a parent with kids at school, so I, you know, unless I were hiding in the sands, I couldn't help but care about it. And it's just as important for everybody else's child as it is for mine. So anything that I can do to make that the best experience for our kids in this district, I am willing to put forth that effort to do it. Because everybody deserves to have a great chance to be successful in life. And I think most parents, if not all of them, want that for their kids.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, taking time out of your personal life to be here. Thank you for the questions and the comments. And I'd like to thank the other two candidates for coming and Todd for his statement, at least providing, you know, something. And I congratulate him and his son. I would definitely have made that choice over sitting here as well if it were my child. As far as closing statements, myself, I was thinking in terms of, do I have an agenda? And do I have a reason for being on the board? And actually, I have several reasons. I have a lot of reasons. And if you want to call them agenda, you can call them agenda, you can call them whatever you want. One of them is that I think being a school board member takes a certain kind of a person. And open-mindedness, being honesty, you know, being honest, takes an ethical person. Takes a person willing to agree to disagree. It takes a person that is open to diversity. With that being said, another one of the reasons I'm on the board is we have a 20% Native American population in this district. And I think that population needs a voice as well. So that is another reason I am on the board. I also think that teachers need advocates. I am on the board for the teachers. I am also foremost and foremost probably, no probably about it, I am on this board because I love kids. And whatever they can do, whatever they're doing in life, I want them to be happy. Whether they're at school, whether they're at home, whether they're, wherever they are. And I want them to be able to get the most out of life. I want them to have better than what I had. And I'll take that opportunity and I'll give them the best I can, every moment I can, whether I'm on the board or not. So I'm hoping I get that opportunity to be on the board. But if I don't, I'll promise you I'll still be around. I'll still be here to make those decisions. I'll still be here to visit the schools. I'll still be here to help volunteer to coach. I'm still going to be here, whether you want me on the board or not. But I can do a good job for you if you do choose that. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy and Mr. Mack. I have to call him Mr. Mack. Never forgot of that. And Tina. And thank you everyone for coming. And don't forget about Monday night, 5:30 at High School. Thanks.